It's six o'clock, so I'm gonna pull this meeting to order. Roll call?
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roja.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Pleniplegics?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, okay, public comment?
None.
Okay. Notice of executive session? April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three?
There is an executive session on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to discuss personnel.
April four minutes, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, public hearing minutes?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roja.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Um, April twenty, or April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roja.
Aye.
Vogel. Kinder.
Aye. Um, communications?
We got a letter of resignation from Mark Harkless submitting a resignation from the Market Authority.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Motion? Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roja.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Um, Your Honor, there is also a letter of resignation letter from Ty Cressman.
I was just gonna ask you about that one. Uh, from Ty Cressman from the Civil Service Board, right? Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion? Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roja.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Uh, manager's report.
Uh, so we have Evan Carnosh here to discuss and give a little bit of an update on the EMS and how everything is going with that. So he has a PowerPoint. The PowerPoint is also included in your packets, but I will turn it over to Evan. You just tell me when to...
I came prepared.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, I know, good stuff. Uh, so, good evening, everyone. Um, we officially have been operating for just under a month now with EMS Division. Um, so we officially went transportable ALS, uh, which is Advanced Life Support Ambulances, April fifth at eight AM. Uh, we had received our licensure through the State Department of Health and have since then been the primary response agency for the city of Meadville. We have staffed twenty-four seven, uh, with paramedic coverage, so we've had advanced life support from start to finish as part of what we said through the state we would be providing, uh, and have been available in service during that time. The call volume started April fifth through, uh, April thirtieth, uh, so just about twenty-six days, uh, one hundred and fifty-six total calls for EMS service. Um, of that, uh, a hundred and twenty-three have been transported to the hospital. So of those other numbers, we had, uh, patient refusals, false calls, uh, medical assists. Uh, but again, a hundred and twenty-three is kind of the big number. That's what we transported. Uh, that's how many that we took in our ambulance. The other big takeaway from that is from April fifth, uh, up until now. So even though this was done through the thirtieth, uh, we have handled one hundred percent of all of the calls within the city that we have been dispatched for. So anytime we have been there, we have been in service, we have not had to go out of service at any time, we have been available for our citizens one hundred percent of the time. And I think that is a, a big key, a big thing to put out there to make sure that's available. Uh, during that time as well, we did handle two calls outside the city of Meadville, uh, for other ambulance services, uh, just due to staffing or, um, the system being overwhelmed, but we handled those, still remain staffing one hundred percent in the city, uh, and made sure that everything got handled in that exact same amount of time. Again, our breakdown just showing here, uh, be a little easier to see otherwise. Uh, but again, we're talking that above seventy-five percent have been transported, uh, so those are the numbers we're looking at, right in line for what we kind of thought originally. You know, we're talking, uh, seventy-eight percent are being transported, leaving us ten percent refusals, ten percent treat no transport, one percent others, false calls, uh, right in line to what we projected would be, uh, we gave our reports all up through that point. ALS versus BLS, so we talked about those breakdowns before. We had always done our numbers kind of based on a fifty-fifty split, you know, trying to be a little bit conservative in our numbers. Up through, uh, April thirtieth, we're actually seeing a sixty-three percent of ALS calls, advanced life support, uh, compared to thirty-seven for the BLS, the basic life support. Uh, so we're seeing those numbers are actually a little bit exceeding what we thought. Um, I guess good and bad. We never want to see advanced life support being used more, but as far as showing that our services are needed and for how we can do that, those are, are things that we'd like to see that way. Are averaging our calls, uh, we're averaging six EMS calls per day. This does not take into account any of our fire rescue emergencies, uh, but the six per day is what we handled during that time. And of that, we're transporting about four point seven four patients per day, um, just to try to get you some of those numbers. With that, if we take that six calls per day and push it out over three hundred and sixty-five days, that means our averages are, uh, were less than a third of a percent from where we said we would be. Uh, so our numbers are showing exactly what we thought they would be. Again, it's a small snapshot, twenty-six days, but having it that we are keeping right in line for what we anticipated, what our projections were, and statistically, this isn't even the busiest time of the year for us. Normally, the summer months, we do see a, uh, a marked uptick in how much we are responding to, so we would only expect those numbers to increase. The backup ambulance, uh, the reason that we had bought to, seeing that there's a, something there, we kind of originally thought it would be in case there's a reason to have it out, available, you know, just to make sure that coverage was there. Uh, we saw in those twenty-six days that it had to handle second EMS calls fourteen times, uh, that there was back-to-back, that one ambulance wasn't able to clear in that amount of time. And of that, uh, twenty percent of our total calls kind of happened within that thirty minutes of another call clearing. And so before they even get back and clear everything in service, finish all their reporting, get the rig ready to go, they're often sent out on another call. And so it's showing that we're do, are having a lot of almost duplicate type calls. Uh, the eleven point four percent that you see on there is showing duplicate calls where their other ambulance is already out and committed. Um, so those numbers were a little higher than we anticipated originally, but again, we've been able to handle every single call. Uh, we did have one day that we ran fifteen different medical emergencies throughout the day on top of the fire and rescue emergencies, so definitely getting its work in, uh, but showing what it needed to that way. The other nice part, uh, that we've been able to track is our response time. One of the big things that we wanted to hit on was our standard of cover of how fast we can operate and provide those advanced level cares, care to our citizens. Um, we are averaging two minutes and forty-five seconds from out the door to on scene over those one hundred and fifty-six calls, uh, which is fantastic when we start looking at cardiac death, um, anything that way. We want to make sure that people are, are taken care of. One hundred percent of our calls has been a response time of less than eight minutes. Again, that was one of those other big components of our standard of cover, knowing that with cardiac arrest, everything over eight minutes shows that decrease in care. We've been able to meet those, uh, as well as our shoot time is what they call it. So when the time dispatch hits our tones till we are pulling out the door. National average tries to tell us that it's ninety seconds. That's kind of a standard for a career department. We are achieving sixty-one seconds currently, from the time the radio goes off, middle of the night, middle of the day, whenever it is, to pulling a rig out the station averaging sixty-one seconds, uh, which is, uh, credit to the men and women down there, uh, for their hard work that they've done with that. So, uh, it has been a, in my opinion, a successful first month. You know, there's obviously been things that we're still working with and growing, um, but it has been, uh, been very well, being able to handle things, seeing things that have been covered and stepped up that way. Uh, so a, a good first twenty-six days for us, and we anticipate those numbers to, uh, continue throughout the year. So...
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
What is a false call?
So a false call, someone that bumps their medical alarm bracelet, someone that thinks their neighbor and maybe needed something, someone that truly doesn't need medical attention, but more of the good intent calls, if you will.
What would you say your average time is? Portal to portal. I mean, from time you leave the station and the time you come back?
Average is twenty-nine minutes and thirty-four seconds currently.
Yeah. Average.
Average, yeah. Ballpark number, I'd say. Our average time once we arrive at the hospital, give our reports, get everything back in service, make sure that the patient has been handled, handled, handed over, excuse me, uh, is right about eleven minutes, which is, uh, still relatively fast as well. We look at other agencies that sometimes are waiting twenty, thirty minutes in other parts of the country to even give a report to a nurse. So our, our numbers have been very good to keep us available longer.
Oh, some of the numbers that you've shown, were, are we tracking them in-house? Or I know that we said that there was like reporting available from our...
Yeah, so we use two different reporting softwares, um, as well as tracking them by hand, just because I sometimes like to make sure everything's there, ducks in a row, the more data the better. Um, all of our reporting software we use for our state and our national stuff that we have to turn in gives us all of this, as well as the county nine-on-one system. We get our times directly from them. They also track that, so we can verify that those appropriate times are being inputted as well.
I think you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, that's great to see.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Felissa.
Um, so council has also asked that we begin to report out on the right-to-know requests that the city is receiving. Um, so I'm gonna provide council at each meeting a year-to-date number of requests, as well as costs associated with those requests. Uh, so year-to-date, we received forty-three right-to-know requests. Um, three hundred dollars was spent on the, our tech company, TechWorks, uh, for pulling any reports and emails that were needed. Uh, were right around two thousand dollars in legal costs with not, um, staff time has not been calculated at this moment, uh, but we can, we can do that as well.
Thanks for that, Mary Ann. I think just to be clear, we're seeing an influx, um, and, uh, just want to be transparent about what that is costing our city. Um, that folks can legally submit right-to-know requests at any point for public information. Council Subcommittee reports. Housing and redevelopment, we did not need. Is there, sorry, is there a market manager update?
Yeah.
Oh, that's not on mine.
Yes, sorry. Uh, so there is a market manager update, as council may or should know. Uh, Kirsten Ames has, uh, left or is leaving. Saturday is her last day as market manager. The Market Authority has hired a new manager. Um, she is from Connecticut. Um, she will be moving here end of July or so to begin, uh, her work as market manager.
Um, who will fill that during the time?
April and I will be.
Will we see the farmer's market in a second? Is that what that means?
You, you likely will, yes. Um, and then also the Market Authority, uh, Market Staff that they currently have working part-time will step up, um, especially Jody Hill. Uh, she'll be stepping up, doing a lot of the polling reports, the day-to-day tasks, um, and then reporting to April and I. Do you, can you tell us more about the manager? Her name or anything, like why she was hired or anything? Uh, her name is Jessie Palm. Uh, she currently runs a camp, college campus bookstore around the Boston area. Um, she's very excited. Her spouse is going to be a professor at Alaguny College, so they are moving. That's why they are moving to this area.
Other words, it was not the high wages for the market master job?
That's correct, yes.
Alright, now, uh, council Subcommittee report. Uh, again, housing and redevelopment did not need, so we'll vote to community engagement. Um, we did need, and, um, Gretchen and I talked about, we requested from staff a list of permitted, uh, events. Um, so if we can get that, uh, we will kind of make a schedule and council can sign up for what we're available for if we, if we want to, um, city staff too, as it, as it makes sense. Uh, we basically just talked about having a presence at more, uh, events that are going on in town. That means we don't have to organize our own events all the time, right? But we can be at, um, we can show up, let people know what's going on. Um, and Gretchen and I are going to work on a kind of plan for engagement, that basically a toolkit we can take to those, um, and, and maybe, uh, address one of our priorities that we set earlier this year, which was, um, getting input, public input on the, on the budget. So we don't know the details of that, but if we can at least get public input on, on city spending and, and use it as a tool to, um, educate the public about, uh, city dollars and how they flow, um, I think that would be great. So Gretchen and I are working on that.
And so the, the EMS and the junior city council and, right, that weird, like we have a table.
Yeah, we can talk about, like, a lot of this stuff. I think that's, um, exciting stuff, great stuff that's coming out of the city right now. Um, so just make sure more people know, go where they're at, meet the people where they are. Um, I did have a community engagement question. The, um, there's like a Meadville celebration on Friday. Is, is that just, is that the Business Alliance just feening First Friday towards Meadville's birthday? I mean, does the city have a presence?
We do not.
Okay.
It is a thing, though, right? It is a Meadville.
It is a Meadville. But it's a Business Alliance. It's a First Friday, then the posters are like Meadville's birthday or something. It's great, it's great. So we could maybe think about, like, short notice, but what we could do there at our market house or something. Well, that's a good idea. Um, that's it for us. Finance Committee?
Might be a bit wanky. Uh, on April twenty-seventh, the Finance Subcommittee had a fact-finding session with Brad Roy. We spent about two hours here asking questions about the legislative process and the physical plate of virtually every municipality in the state. And we emphasized several times that the growth in the cost to provide government service outstrips the growth of the revenues to pay for. Um, we also discussed the status of a piece of legislation sponsored by another legislator who would, which would enable a modest, but unfortunately insufficient increase in local service tax. It's a step in the right direction, and it include indexing for cost of living, but it would still be too little, too late to help most cities. And the problem with that legislation is all legislators try to, uh, force the money to be used for a specific thing rather than what's needed. Like, for EMS, we might need it for fire and police. Uh, and that would be a problem with the legislation. Uh, we gave a metric to Brad about the problem with any kind of a fixed fee, and we'll, we'll talk about it here. Back in nineteen-sixties, the per capita taxing may go, yield at about sixty thousand dollars a year, because we had more people and more jobs. Back then, the average wage of police officer or firefighter was six thousand dollars a year. So the per capita tax alone would have paid the base wages of either ten firemen or ten policemen. Today, per capita tax, including the penalty and delinquent, yields about fifty thousand dollars. And that's fewer dollars than sixty years ago, and we haven't even adjusted for the inflation. Today's, uh, base salary of an average police officer is around sixty thousand. So to illustrate now, the total revenue from the per capita tax wouldn't even cover the cost of one newly hired, uh, police officer, let alone an experienced one. We questioned Brad about enacting legislation to obtain state funding to perform a county-wide reassessment. And he was very diplomatic, but just the response was this. Fifty counties already have funded their own reassessments. The probability of successfully passing legislation to get the remaining counties', uh, money was slightly lessened out of the snowball in hell. Um, we also gave Brad a list of questions and solutions, ranging from amending the Municipal Authority Act to a state constitutional amendment to broadening Act Five-Eleven, which Gretchen is, is more conversant with. He said he'd be willing to study the proposals and get back to us. So we intend to follow up on the issues in the foreseeable future and report to council. Gretchen, what do you have?
I have pretty much that. We're hoping, like, in maybe, um, like, two weeks' time to get a half of Brad. Because he did say he would, like, he really needed to look at all the materials and, um, and definitely felt like he was engaging with, with the problems that we're presenting and everything. Um, I would just say the other thing we talked about that, in terms of our meeting, the comprehensive plan, that we're not gonna, we're hoping that staff can do that because of the price tag, like, the, the five, the, that five to ten year projection. Um, and that, because you got the meeting covered early, well, Jim, the other thing is that we're hoping that we can have stuff, um, budget kind of fall apart in August, and we're thinking that that would be doable. And then that meeting that we have with Brad.
Didn't you have, didn't you, uh, have him, uh, give him a copy of the municipal league form?
Yeah, I did, yeah. Yeah, so he has a, a copy of, um, like, well, especially because they had their different agendas, but the thing about the, the reformation, the, the, the tax code, correct, yeah, yeah. And it's, um, raising the cap on the earned income tax, uh, regular property assessments, flat taxes to grow as inflation, um, um, and that would include the LST tax, and then this possibility of local and regional revenue options, um, that would be like county sales tax, a drink tax, payroll, and non-residential tax. So that's kind of all in that, with their, um, legislation that they're, they're working on. So that was the other part of that.
And they are the Pennsylvania Municipal League?
Yeah, they, yeah, correct.
And, and Katie had sent, I think, to us before that meeting with you all, like, the form letters that we can send? Do, do you plan to bring those to us?
We talk, we talk, yeah, yeah.
But just so that it's a formal request coming from our council, and then also Michelle, right, there's, there's other folks.
We like to talk with staff about that, because the letter felt very PA Municipal League, like, and Jim's a really good writer, and so we are hoping to, to form a letter that was like a Meadville letter, that we would work on to present.
Let me, let me share an experience.
Yeah.
A number, a number of, you know, Gretchen and I talked about this. Uh, a number of years ago, there was an issue probably related to local taxes, and I wrote a letter to three state representatives that we had at the time, Roy Bill, Tracy Forcia, and it was not Jim Mary, uh, whoever, whoever's in Jim Mary's district after, oh, Tracy Seifert. And we explained the problems, and we were looking for solutions. Now, you may or may not know that the state legislature has what they call the Legislative Research Bureau, which is a nice way of saying they pulled a form letter, because all three people provided a letter. It was word for word. The only thing that differed was their signature and their, their address. So form letters to them is probably gonna generate a form letter back. Uh, we may want to try to customize something that's a little more tailored and, and shows some particular thought.
Yeah, I, I would be on board with something customized, but I, I think there is value, though, too, like, we're, if we're members now, right, of the PA Municipal League, and like, if there's a coordinated effort that shows we're not in isolation in terms of the, you know, the kind of financial burdens that, that we're facing, um, right? But that it is a statewide problem. I think that's good to, you know, be part of that.
I think, I think there is value, because it was on their, like, their letterhead and everything, and it was, you just kind of plug in your stats. So I, I do think there would be power.
Company, I don't know. I mean, I trust your judgment, but I, I think.
But we, we just felt like, you know how you kind of write a form letter, you just kind of go blah, 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 blah. So I just felt like I wanted something with a little bit more like, you know, this is, yeah, this is really truly more personal.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So will we see a personal letter at our next meeting or something?
Um, we'll have to, we'll get together and work on it.
We kind of have to, both Jim and I are really busy for the next two weeks. We will work on it.
Okay.
Possibly, but for June, I choose for June, first meeting in June.
For June. Does change the matter of finances? Infrastructure?
Probably both of us are gonna have something to report, are we not?
Um, yeah, I think the big takeaway for me, Peter had prepared, um, a kind of helpful, um, memo that, that led a conversation about, uh, the market square parking garage, um, and I, the takeaway, the, what we walked away with was, um, a kind of charge to Peter as staff to, um, I guess staff more broadly, to get, uh, to, to put together a press for proposals to see what, uh, um, uh, what is, what is the assessment of like condition, a condition report, like, so just to see what it'll cost to have someone tell us how bad the parking garage is in need of repair and how long we have, um, to deal with it. Um, so we're gonna see, we're gonna see how much that'll cost, and then that'll come back to us if we want to do that report. And then in the meantime, uh, Peter has the charge, I believe, to, uh, kind of get working on a parking assessment of, of the whole city to make sure, right, like, uh, we're, we're providing adequate parking for, for our kind of size and demand.
We'd also discuss the true cost of the parking garage in order to keep it standing. If you're building it today, what you really would need to charge for rent, and it's discouraging, you're probably talking about close to two hundred dollars per month per space, uh, because of the cost of paying off the debt and keeping it, shall we say, in, in ongoing pristine condition. That's a realistic, that's probably actually a conservative estimate. Um, as far as getting the funds to perform the study, it'd be nice if we'd get some grant money. Uh, otherwise, since we were talking about a piece of capital equipment, it may be a justified use to, uh, get some money out of the capital reserve, but that would be a last resort, uh, means of funding the study. But we do, we do need a, a professional, and I think our current, our engineer is, uh, kind of busy right now, which is why we were, uh, looking about getting someone else.
Yeah, and it hadn't been him who did the last one either.
Didn't we ask for something like that last year when we were talking about the parking garage? I, I feel like we did that, and we asked Ashley something to tell us if we should keep it or get the money behind keeping it, or?
He, he doesn't, he did generate that opinion, um, but it was a opinion and not the extent that you would get with a conditions assessment. The conditions assessment will actually go specifically through piece by piece of the parking garage, um, all different aspects, and Ashley did not do that in depth of an analysis.
Candy?
That's an excellent question. He is very busy. The Heidi Cooper Park, um, has him very, very busy amongst other things. Uh, if you recall, um, we had to go out to a different engineering firm to do the conditions assessment for the streets garage because of the time capacity that Ashley has. We can certainly ask, and he could submit a proposal if he wanted to do that. Um, he's not under any kind of retainer for the city, so it's not a duplication of, of expenditures if we were to go with another firm.
Um, it might be helpful, can we recirculate Ashley's opinion from last year?
Yeah.
That might be helpful, especially if the cost to do a conditions assessment.
Right.
It's scary. What's your idea?
Yeah, he basically said it needs to be repaired and cleaned down while based on the, it's all the same thing.
I will recirculate that, but Ashley's opinion was that it should be demolished.
Yeah, that's a good shot. Okay, um, old business?
So Peter will take a break from his minute taking, um, to discuss a couple of points concerning the zoning ordinance. I do have the updated zoning ordinance here, uh, with the comments from both Tim and P, uh, Tim, Peter, and Gary. Uh, so if you wanted a copy of that, it's here for you.
Is the difference in the one that we, we're centering?
No.
It's the same size, Chris?
I think so.
I found a shelf of zoning ordinances, and I thought, wow, this is...
So also to be clear, that might not be the, the, the most recent one, because that's the one that was sent to the solicitor, uh, now a month and a half ago, something.
Correct, yeah.
So all of the things that we haven't gone over, the past month and a half, the possible meetings and such, etc., is not reflected in that. Thanks. So, uh, we did get that with our commentary term from Tim Walker. Uh, his comments were slight, and in the exchange, uh, he did not have, uh, too much in his initial, uh, review about that between Gary and I. We couldn't also just address rather simply, that's my opinion, what Gary has. We couldn't also just address rather simply, that's my opinion, what Gary has. There's two things that might be of note. One is that we agreed to revisit the short-term rental provisions because there's some conflicting and restrictive limits on the requirements of the residency status of the person who's operating the short-term rental. And don't you know there was a second one that I forgot about, but you'll read it in the comments. Is there any questions about that?
I think this is kind of off the wall a little bit, Peter. It was the, you know, when you were talking about trailers, it just actually had me wondering about, like, if the hospital, you know, they'll hook up like a trailer, like temporarily, like an MRI thing or something, or a school. I just, I was just wondering, like, is that, is that a concern, you know, like, in terms of the zoning ordinance, like, you know what I mean, right, when it's like they'll hook up a thing and it's, just it's there for a short period of time? Does that need to be addressed in the zoning ordinance, I guess?
Like, two days a week, they pull a trailer up for the MRI.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just had me wondering, like.
It really depends on how long it's, is it, is it like a permanent installation? Is it meant for human occupancy or is it really like the MRI has been where it's a piece of equipment or a vehicle?
What about like a school where sometimes they'll just have a temporary thing for like a year while they're?
For renovation?
Yeah, for renovations.
That would be considered part of construction and really wouldn't be regulated the same as a building would be?
Okay, it was, it was really random, but when I saw the trailer thing, I was thinking about trailers I've seen.
We do have provisions for temporary, temporary structures or temporary occupancies in related to construction. Usually it has to do with like 180 day timeframe, which is the same as the building code, so we kind of look at it that way. It really is, it is, it is very specific to the situation that you're talking about. So there are some provisions for it.
Okay, thanks.
The second bullet point, just to see that I try my best to keep the promise to itemize every one of the revisions that had been made to the zoning ordinance since things were returned by the planning commission at the end of January last year. So you'll find a list of those that were made by consensus by council over the past couple of meetings and those that were handled internally by staff to, for freeze, oversights or other minor things.
You're talking about the numbers summary, starting at the end of page two.
Correct.
Does that mean you already talked about typologies? Did I miss that?
Where at?
Page one. My takeaway, I don't know how we're moving through this. My takeaway on page one seems like you and Gary still have some beef with typo, the typologies.
Oh, you mean at bullet point three?
Well, they're not bullet, they're numbers. Number three that says Peter Grilla, I'm, I'm just by this layout, but it starts with Peter Grilla?
Yes, that's the one.
Okay. Is that, does that mean it's from you?
Yes.
Great.
Tried to make the distinction between what I wrote and what Gary wrote.
Gotcha, okay. All right. Sorry if I'm jumping around. If you want to talk about the summary, that's fine.
Yeah, I had to put this into order as best as I could on short notice. I apologize if the format's a little bit confusing. Uh, yes, and that's right, we're at the point now, Jim has some outstanding concerns about the building typologies, which we really can't address completely until we circle back to get council's consensus on what to do with the zoning ordinance at this point. So back in August, at the beginning, there was the commentary that Gary and I provided intact on the zoning ordinance and then there was the consensus by council to return the zoning ordinance to the planning commission. And so at that time, over these past months, the planning commission returned the opinion that they like the zoning ordinance pretty much as it is with the building typologies and all the other form-based things intact. And to speak for myself and also Gary, our opinion has also not changed since August that those are problematic. So at this point, with planning commission's opinions and staff's opinions, we are kind of at a point where to move towards adopting the ordinance or revising any further, we need a consensus, what to do with the building typologies and how to address any outstanding issues. Either we can retain building typologies and other of the form-based stuff based on planning commission's recommendations, or we can do further revisions with it. And at this point, that's, I'd say, in your hands. And so if you have any questions about that, any further, please let me know.
I guess, like, I feel like there are enough concerns here that you and Gary have that for me, I feel like there's this last window and I feel like I would want to do A, which is to go into that a little bit more in depth and heavily look into like what that is because once that window closes, we're going to commit to move forward and I just feel like, I want, I just want to know if we, you know, what's missing. So I would be, I would be leaning towards A under, in terms of like, you know, Peter discussing with council heavily and in depth. So that would be my, my leanings.
I should temper that also by saying that nothing is set in stone. There's always opportunities to revisit this and any other provisions iteratively over time.
Right, yeah.
So it's just a matter of getting ahead of any development that would take advantage of this ordinance before any other revisions are in place.
What do you envision, how long do you think it would take to review the, to revise the typologies?
I mean, depending on how much Peter wants to get into that, I, I'm a little bit different opinion. I don't know that we need to scrap them entirely, but I think it needs to be refined and detailed and I kind of talked about that a little bit, some of my concerns from administrative enforcement standpoint. But to look into it heavily, it really depends on council's schedule and agenda. If you're gonna, if you can dedicate an hour meeting, you could get through it probably in a couple of months, I'm guessing, depending on, I think, and of course, does Peter have the bandwidth from a staff perspective, but at least a couple of months, I would think, depending on how you want to get into it. So this is one of those tasks, in my opinion, that it does seem like, I forget what the rule is, but task takes up as much time as you allow it to take up. So if there's a certain deadline by which you really want to see this done done without going any further beyond that, that'll just change my pace of work on how we address it and how you address it. Right now, there was no set deadline that I was certain of.
Right, so there's no set deadline. We've been working on this zoning ordinance for a little over four years. I think in the beginning, we had a grant and now we don't. And so I guess just like, I don't want to not have an ordinance that we feel good about, but right, like, the more time we spend on it, like, the more money of our own that we spend on it and not on some of the priorities that we set in the beginning of the year, a housing plan or at least a plan that centers affordable housing. You know, we've just moved forward with the charge for this park, you know, for a parking plan. Yeah, I guess I'm, I don't want us to, it doesn't feel fiscally responsible for us to kind of just do overwork that we've already done. I guess, like, I would maybe be of the opinion, like, if folks want, like, Gretchen, I hear what you're saying, and if we scheduled like a longer working session or something, and I would want to invite the planning commission to even, you know, like, to just go through the typologies and not fully understand the concerns. I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm just, I want, I want to, I want to pass this on.
Yeah, I know.
And, and the more we drag it out, the, the more we have dragged it out and the more time it's taken.
Despite appearances, I also don't enjoy having all of my time thinking about something.
You definitely look like you do.
I know, despite appearances.
What do others think?
I was going to say, I haven't been on this for four years, right, like, but it still feels like a very long time we've been discussing zoning. We want to make sure that it is working the best for everyone, that's why we've changed it, right? That's why we're trying to change it. So I'm not opposed to, to making some work sessions a little bit longer. I kind of am feeling like Gary, right, like, to kind of tweak what we have, right, going a little bit deeper, but not like totally revise everything, right? I feel like we've got a good base, a good, but that, you know, that's, that's just how I feel. I also don't feel like we should be spending all of our time and all of, you know, and a lot of money, you know, if we don't have to.
And by the money, that's in staff time.
Just your time, yeah, just staff time, yeah. That's free of you, Amanda.
Larry?
Yeah, I feel that way. I guess, I think one of those things someone said, make sure that everybody understands that the typologies of the homes. And what comes to my mind, again, is the one down on South Main. I just think we need to make sure we're all on the same page about what's being restricted or what can be changed and how everything can be done. There's a, you know, other than that, I think we're going ahead with it. I don't want to spend a lot of money and time to reinvent a wheel. And these guys have done a pretty good job with everything else. If I have any questions, I will go to them to make sure I get an understanding. I don't want to waste staff's time with questions that maybe already have been answered or just need to be explained to me so I understand.
Yeah, if you need an opinion, I, as whatever explanation you need to help you understand it, I personally think that's useful, I mean, it's kind of what I like to think I'd be helpful for.
I still believe we need to do some work on the typologies if we keep them at all. It bears more study. This is an important document. It's going to affect development in the city for probably another quarter of a century once it's enacted. And in terms of council actually having it, we've maybe had it, oh, about a year ourselves, not four years.
Well, it's public, as the planning commission.
So, but in terms of the finished product, so I'd like to see Gary, I'd like to see the typologies review, yes.
Okay, so can we, can we like make a plan for how we want to review the typologies? I, for one, feel like my bandwidth during like regular council meetings was limited and like, that's not necessarily how, I would want to dig in and understand. I, I'm fearing that we might have a lot going, I don't know, we might have a lot on the agenda for our study session on Wednesday, so I don't know if we want to make a separate time, like.
It's going to take them more than a week, I would suspect.
So if you like, we can have, we can allocate a couple of months where there's a window for either a non-quorum or U to come or a quorum and just outside of the regular meeting schedule, outside of the study schedule or outside of the subcommittee schedule, I don't mind that, where we can poke and prod at the building typologies and the form-based stuff to bring you all up to speed about much of what Gary and I are talking about. And then we'll see what happens after those couple of months and then that will determine the pace of adoption after that. Otherwise, remember you can all individually ask me questions further and I can give you my opinions about that outside of council, council meetings.
Great, so Peter, you're going to, you're going to work to schedule those times?
Yeah.
Is that one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Fine, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to point out that we, we want to get the bulk of this done and the majority of this done before budget. We start our budget meetings and things like that because there will not be time for this during budget, so let's use that as a timeline.
Okay.
We can move on to the summer. And will we have to recirculate to like the county and?
If it changes substantively, yes. That shouldn't take too much time out of this. They return, they have to return opinion within 45 days. And they return theirs within, I think it was 15, just as how the timing worked with their own planning commission.
Thank you, Peter. New business?
So included in your packet, you'll see the current status of the ABC appointments as well as some of the applications of prospective appointees. Staff will begin to coordinate interviews of the applicants. I also emailed out to council who is the liaison to each authority. So I just want to note though that the vacancy is left open on the market authority and civil service board by the two resignations you accepted tonight. Those will not be part of this round of interviews. We will need to re-advertise those openings along with another resignation that you will be asked to approve at the next council meeting of Dean Conrad, who is an alternate on the code appeals board. We received that resignation just this week, so. This is more of an FYI for council about the status of those appointments.
Marion, do we, I see that you have this, how many vacancies were advertised? I'm sorry.
Katie usually handles that. I believe the six here that are not, the ones that were not noted, not advertised above current vacancies, those were all, were advertised.
So some of the vacancies didn't receive applicants and some did not, like, receive maybe one.
That's correct.
Is it worth just including all of these vacancies in this next?
We can do that, yes.
Advertisement?
I think that would be the best because we don't, yeah, we wouldn't have it up there.
So that would mean not, not moving forward, like, the interview process until we would get those back next time.
Correct.
How long does our policy have a post opening?
I believe it's two weeks.
Okay.
So weakening it.
So we open these back up for another two weeks?
That's correct, yes.
So I guess the question before council right now then is, there is, like I said, another resignation letter that you would approve. It is for an alternate on the code appeals board, but do you want us to wait to advertise until council approves that at the following council meeting on the 17th or do you just want us to move forward?
We all promised to accept the resignation.
Well, actually, so if we don't accept the resignation, like, you know what I mean?
They start and they die.
Right, right, so, so I, yeah, I would just.
Okay.
So can we?
Just put a call, anybody else thinking of Quentin?
Yeah, we need to have Quentin.
On the list now. So can we, are we going to start interviewing these, the people on this list then?
From my understanding.
If we're opening them up.
We're going to.
We're going to re-open.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
We can start trying to coordinate with the folks who have already, but to hold the actual interviews, probably best to wait until after that advertising window closes again.
Okay.
All right. Discussion, motion acceptance of selective to city insurance carrier.
One second.
Discussion?
Sam?
So every year, on May 13th, we have the renewal and our best intentions back in January was to get this done a little earlier, but we're kind of at the mercy of the underwriter. And in this case, selective was our current carrier and the underwriter that we work with had personal issues and so we had to go to another underwriter which held the process up a little bit, so that's why the late thing, getting it to you. But the renewal is just about right where we thought. I had budgeted 10%, I think we're around 8%. Some of them, my glass is on, but the property, you'll see that it went down about 5,000. That's because the Kepler building was sold and is no longer being insured. Some of the other ones that went up dramatically was the auto, which was about 10,000, and that's due to the new fire trucks, the million dollar fire truck, and then a couple of plow trucks that we. the million dollar fire truck, and then a couple of plow trucks that we got. So other than that, the actual insurance didn't go up, it's just the value of the equipment that we have went up. So we're pretty happy with that. And if you go back to twenty and twenty-one, our, our amounts were a hundred eighty-one thousand, a hundred ninety-one thousand. So even with this renewal, we're at one a hundred seventy thousand. And we're real happy with working with selective. They've been really responsive for any claims we have.
Tim, I have one question. Uh, on your inland marine miscellaneous property.
Yeah, that one, I did not get a callback, but I know that was a mistake on how that's handled of where they put that amount.
Okay.
Yeah, that's seven point nine million. I'm pretty sure we don't have that.
So that's the coverage that we would have had?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that was just a, a mistake.
We didn't have any big boats?
If you look at the premiums, the premiums weren't anywhere close to having, you know, um, ten, twenty times the coverage, so.
Is there, is there, is there like a state, like I know that, like coast, is there a state program that?
For insurance?
For insurance, like is there?
Nothing I'm aware of unless you want like the staker, state workers' comp fund and stuff like that. I don't believe there's really a state program. There's government-type programs like PERMA and some of those like that, but, uh, they're not very competitive for what we're doing. So again, I would probably recommend, uh, renewing this. Like I said, we've been pretty happy with their response to everything we've done and the costs are very much in line.
So do you have any other questions? All right, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rahab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Discussion, motion, council meeting schedule.
So council will recall, um, back in January when we were setting the schedule for council meetings, there was some discussion about moving at least one of the council meetings to the first Tuesday of the month. Uh, Gretchen had indicated that come June, uh, she would be able to move that, those council meetings. Uh, Tim is available both the first and third Wednesday, or excuse me, first and third Tuesday of the month, beginning in January. Uh, so we could move the council meetings to six P M. on Tuesdays.
Beginning June?
Beginning in June.
Now, we haven't done anything about changing study sessions yet.
That's correct.
Yeah, and just, yeah, we had, yeah, I mean, we can look at other times. I think the idea when we had set, uh, study sessions and subcommittee meetings, uh, was that we recognized we were adding another meeting to staff schedules and the idea of keeping it more or less in the workday felt kind, but it, it doesn't matter. I don't know. Jim, Jim, you made it, you made it clear that, you know, you don't let any, I'm not sure.
To attend some new meetings and I'd like us all to be able to attend meetings, discuss.
We, we set the time together, we, we can move it together. Uh, do you have a proposal for that?
I don't have a proposal for that. I support, um, grabbing along with changing meetings to the first and third Tuesdays. I have no problem with that. And then leave study sessions something to be negotiated.
Sure. Um, all right, so can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rahab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
So that's, sorry, that's June, uh, June sixth will be the first, the first on that schedule. Uh, discussion, motion, trauma training expense.
Uh, so included in your, your packets, um, is a proposal. Um, the city has been engaged in, um, discussions about having all of city staff trained in trauma training. Um, this is spearheaded by Joe Barnhart of the, um, Crawford County Human Services and involves some training from Audrey Smith, who is a licensed psychologist at Parkside Psychological Society, and also Maria Rosario-Husbands, who is part of the Hope Initiative and also a trauma trainer. Um, the ask here is if the city were to do this, the city would, is asked to contribute a thousand dollars, um, to take part in, in that training.
Does that, that would include all employees then for that thousand? Will you all be city employees?
Correct. It would probably be four different sessions, um, spanning, you know, Ju- June through July. Four different sessions in the morning during the work hours.
If the curriculum contains four sessions or there's?
No, there'll be four separate sessions. The training itself is two and a half to three hours.
Okay, yeah. And so this is like administrative staff, fire EMS, police?
Correct. Everybody, yep.
Does that include, um, like our crossing guard or something like that?
It can.
I'm just, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking.
Uh, for, for, we might have to make some, you know, accommodations. Some may have to watch a recording, um, rather than actually participate in the actual training itself, um, but we can make work.
Sure. Um, can I have a motion?
I'm moved to, uh, accept this expense and train our staff.
Second.
Discussion?
I would suggest two things. One that we, if we're going to do this, that we start strictly with our police department because they are the most likely to be able to use it. And since we wouldn't be using, having all of our people trained, I'd ask that the thousand dollars be waived.
So we wouldn't have all of our people trained?
I, I don't, at this point, I don't see the need for having all people trained. I have, I can see police needing it. My only concern is the state may mandate that in the future and they may mandate a different set of parameters, which means our police would have to go into a second set of training.
I think there's confusion in what this training is, right? This isn't, this is not like our, our, um, you know, our police training that is mandated, right? Like that is, um.
It's, I understand.
This is trauma-informed training, which, which anyone that, that has contact with the public should be trained, trauma-trained, right, for trauma. So, so the people, there's lots of people in, in here that has, that have contact, especially, um, you know, the people that are at the front staff, right? These are, these are people on the ground. Same with, um, people who are working in the Parks Department, right? They, they're constantly being asked questions and, and, um, talking to people. Um, I think that anybody on the ground, anybody that talks to people should be, should be trained. I, I don't think this is, it's, I don't think it's the same as the, the training that our police get and are mandated. Um, this is needle, you know, putting its best foot forward and trying to.
And maybe I have a misunderstanding. Is this going to be dealing with or training people how to, that's been involved or may be coming in a trauma? Like, for example, uh, when a storm, you were here, there are other city employees, now if there had been more trauma, is that, are they going to teach people how to deal with, if there would have been more trauma, how to cope with that? Or just?
So this is a very, very thirty thousand foot level kind of training, just to learn how to possibly identify dealing with, that you're dealing with somebody and their reactions are prompted out of a trauma response? That's my understanding of, of what this training is. It is not an, a training intended on, this is how then you subsequently deal with those individuals. It's solely focused on identifying, being able to identify why someone is reacting the, the way they are.
Are you aware if any other municipality has been approached about A. donating and B. taking part in this?
Um, I'm uncertain about the donating portion. I don't believe any other municipality has, has a body taken part in that. Other entities, from my understanding, have in the city. I will say that there is a county-wide CIT training, which is a crisis intervention training that's currently in the steering committee phases. This also involves the Crawford County Human Services. It will be training, this is training specifically for police officers. And I know Chief Totten has been part of the discussion, um, and like I said, they're in the steering phases of that at this point. Should also be noted that the police, because of the grant, are going to four additional trainings this year. So this would be a fifth, the CIT would be a sixth. Police will be going to use of force, a de-escalation training, implicit bias training, and recognizing mental illness training.
I think this complements those. I think Chief Totten has been in conversations with the folks from Crawford County Human Services and System of Care since like twenty sixteen, maybe even earlier, about doing this. So I think, I think it's, it's great that we're expanding it, um, uh, beyond just our police department. I, uh, think Jim's idea is a good one and to maybe start with police and fire and prioritize those, the scheduling of it. Um, I don't know, but I, I think that this, um, I think it's great. I think a thousand dollars in, you know, I, I know we got a pinch pennies, but in the grand scheme of things, uh, it's not a whole lot. Um, take it out of the pad and take this year. Like, I mean, it's, it's, it's so little money and I think it's fine. I, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward.
We will, however, have a hidden cost and that is probably around twenty thousand dollars of lost productivity because.
Or a different kind of productivity, Jim, it's, you know.
And we're going to be paying overtime to people, to, to staff in some positions when you do that. As long as you know, I mean, we have a budget deficit coming up. Uh, that's the address.
I have a question. Is the, what they're offering is something that in-house meeting in the city or the county that different agencies that could offer this and?
This is our county. This is our county offering it.
Okay, um, so if they're offering, I, I don't understand why, if it's going to be offered, why are we going to pay a thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to pay the thousand.
I understand it's a donation.
Yeah, I think it, I think it shows a commitment, right, to, to trauma and form care in our, in our city and.
So the, the program itself, um, that this is being, being conducted through, uh, is funded through a grant. They have expended, from my understanding, a great portion of that grant in the trainings that they have done throughout the, the city. And so they're down to the last little bit of their grant.
So if we would have done it when we were first approached about it years ago, we could have saved a thousand dollars. Um, I, again, I think, I think it demonstrates a commitment. I'm glad you did.
Do you, well, I guess, I feel like I don't know enough of what, I shouldn't say, well, I don't know. I don't really know the program. Like, I don't know like how it would affect Debbie's life and Barb's life as they sit there and hi, how can I help you? Like that's, like, how do they feel about it? I, I just, I would be, I, I think I appreciate a little bit more, just, I get, more discussion. I'm, I just don't know. I feel like I don't know quite enough.
Can we invite the folks from, uh, if, if folks don't, if you don't feel like you can move forward tonight, can we, or, or maybe you do and we can talk to them for Crawford?
Uh, we can do that. Joe was trying to attend tonight, but unfortunately unable to make it.
How many, how many crossing guards do we have? Roughly?
Twenty-five?
Seventeen.
Huh?
I think it's seventeen, isn't it?
Somewhere around there. Who actually, you know, ends up participating?
Are, are they included in this eighty-eight person?
It, it's for the, they're not. It's for the sessions though, the number of sessions.
It's not for the number of people, it's for the number of sessions?
Yes.
I mean, I'm always willing to make a deal. If they are included with no increase in a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I imagine that, that they would do that.
So are you on board, Joe?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'd be pushing it if I asked for auxiliary police beat down.
I, I would be good though.
So, so it's going to be a, that we'll offer signup sheets on the dates and then who signs up?
See who can make it.
Who, who can make it, who can make it. Um, and we'll try to voluntold to the best of our ability.
The staff will be encouraged to sign up for one day?
Yes, they'll be offered four different days. Um, we'll try to make it work. And again, if someone can't attend, it'll be a recording that they can sit down and launch, um, not incurring overtime hopefully as part of that.
So councilperson, I would, I would want to do the training honestly, so I mean.
Okay, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rahab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Discussion, uh, first and second reading and mobilization of vehicle ordinance.
Okay.
Yep.
We can table that.
This is the one that?
One of the two that we were talking about.
Sure. Um. Is that a motion? Do you, or you? Well, I guess it's not on the floor.
It's not on the floor, yeah.
Right, okay. So, um. We would like to table, but what do you, what do you want from us to table this? We don't want to?
A motion to table?
We make a motion.
Does it have to be on the floor?
Because it, yeah, like, yes. Because it's on the agenda, we, it's on.
So we have to put it on the floor and then have a second motion table?
Okay.
A floor. So can I just make a motion to table this?
Yeah.
Is that what we're?
You put it on the floor, just make a motion to consider, second, then discussion, then a motion table, then.
Okay. All right, motion to consider. A second. All right. Can, can we at least just know what it is that we're considering and then tabling?
Right.
Booting cars, right?
Yeah.
Booting cars.
Right.
Sure, this is an ordinance that would allow the city to boot vehicles for unsettled parking violations. Um, what's ending up happening is this is specifically related to Allegheny College. Um, many of the students have cars that are registered to their parents as out-of-state vehicles. They're incurring parking tickets. Per law, the parking citation has to go to the registered owner just because of how it works. Um, a person, a parent, as they say in Michigan, receives a citation, they ignore it. There's nothing that we can do. They're not going to extradite the person for a parking ticket, uh, from Michigan to Pennsylvania. Uh, so the individual, the student, we've had instances incurring six to thirteen different parking tickets that remain unpaid and we have no recourse, uh, for this. So that is the reason for the booting ordinance.
So what, what, what normally happens in town? Say somebody doesn't pay their, their tickets, right? Like what, what normally, what's the normal?
Uh, the normal process, it would go to citation. If the person ignores the citation, uh, then it would go to bench warrant. And then if they were to be picked up in the natural course of, of things, um, they would be brought in and forced to kind of either adjudicate the, the citation.
But that doesn't work if you live out of state.
Correct.
And you reached out to campus security to end the, there is, there is no?
The, all they can do is encourage the student to pay their ticket.
Yeah.
They can't, there's no recourse.
And it's their tuition?
There's no recourse because it's not the parent, it's not the student, it's the parent who the citation is, um, designated to, so they can't do that.
Yeah, I, I understand this. I think the reason, I, I think we, I personally want it, uh, a little longer to, um, work on this is I think it said like, if there's so much as one outstanding parking ticket, and I'm just afraid of the implications that will have on folks off campus as well, right? It feels, it feels tough.
So to clarify, we're going to table it for a discussion about the number of times, how, or is council going to provide comments?
I think we'll probably just have.
Is there a table to, do we want to take it to a study session?
Yeah, of a, of a study session.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So next week's study session on the tenth, right?
Yeah. So I still need to move to table.
Motion table, second.
Should be tabled to the study session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rahab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Uh, discussion, uh, first and second reading, amending police retirement and pension fund to add provisions establishing in retire, retirement window for certain long service employees.
Motion? Second?
Discussion?
Uh, Peter, do you want to read the?
Yeah, sure, just getting all the stuff down. It's pretty much exactly what you said. An ordinance of the city. It's pretty much exactly what you said. An ordinance of the city of Meathville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending article one-six-three of the Meathville Municipal Code, City Police Retirement and Pension Fund, to add section one-six-three A-one, to add provisions establishing a retirement window for certain long-serving employees.
Uh, so in this window, uh, the city has offered windows, retirement windows before. The city would offer this for specifically police officers, and this would be an offer for a twenty and out. Typically, police officers have a age requirement that accompanies the, uh, service requirement. We'd waive the age requirement, offer a twenty and out. Uh, this means obviously any officers with twenty years of service could choose to retire without having to satisfy the age requirement and, or incur any penalties. There are currently four officers who would, um, fall into this window.
No, there is a waiver here for age discrimination. So they'd be required to sign that before they can get out early.
Why? What does that mean?
So to cancel the city for age discrimination by virtue of forcing them out or pushing them out because they're over forty years old. Um, so that just covers the city from liability.
They're typically, typically saying that they agree that because it's a twenty-year deal, that's, that's what they're based on, not age requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, in theory, someone can create a policy that kind of pushes older people out. And so this is basically, and they're to get this benefit, they have to sign the waiver saying that.
And this is voluntary, right?
Correct.
So it's not really a...
Yeah, and this, this just puts it right in that, yeah. And there will be a separate waiver in there.
Does anybody have any other questions? Where are we at? First is, uh, can I have a motion for the first reading?
Motion?
Second.
Second, um...
Discussion.
Roque? McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi. Um, can I have a motion for the second?
So move.
Second. Discussion. Roque?
McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi.
Um, resolution, authorize signatures, bicentennial park bus shelter agreement, CADA and City of Meathville.
This is a... Okay. All right, I forget what order, let's, let's go. A resolution of the council of the city of Meathville authorizing signatures on a license agreement for a bus shelter and bike rack at bicentennial park between the city of Meathville and Crawford area transportation authority.
Where is it on the map exactly?
It's the corner of Meadav and French Street.
Okay, it's just that corner, okay.
The Meadav side?
Yes.
So that would be, that was... That was my question, 'cause I thought it said southwest.
Yeah.
Put it by Bologna, like, where they put it down there.
No, actually, that would be...
Or, what, what's down there? Isn't that, that's south.
That, that, well, it's the southwest corner of those streets, as opposed to the...
Southwest corner of the two intersection, not the southwest corner of the...
Yeah, that helps, thanks.
I was like, why are they putting it down there?
Yeah. Okay, great.
No, no, it sounds good. No, it's fine.
So we have a motion, yes.
Yes, and do have, did, did we have, did we get the second?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay. This is discussion. Does anybody have any other questions?
Who shall pull the sound?
Uh, yeah.
I believe CADA is responsible in the agreement for any maintenance.
Being that they're gonna use, are anyone talking about putting more benches down there because they're gonna be having a shelter and...
I'm unaware of any discussion about that.
Well, the shelter will have a bench, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Well, I guess what, yeah, that, that, and the thing is, that will be for CADA. So, um, I've had people, especially of the Leslie senior citizens that go there. If there's a canoe outing or if there's one event there, most of the benches are taken out. So it would be nice if we could convince someone to put in a couple of extra benches.
Well, and we have, we have some things going on. Is, yeah, is bicentennial done?
No.
The renovations? No, but it should be done, or started at least, very soon.
We are still working with Ashley, um, on some design pieces of that. We have a meeting, I think, next week or so. Yes, next Tuesday to discuss that.
So we parked, um, are benches in the scope of...
Around the playground area.
I mean, we put new, new tables. I mean, we've got a lot of good tables out, you know, in the middle, not just in the shelter at this point. I mean, there were, uh, so that you could use it more. It didn't used to be like that, but are we putting more benches?
There will be some benches in the playground area, just like in HP Way Park.
Sure.
Yep.
Now, we already have, they have a design for this. They're gonna be putting in a concrete slab and...
Yeah.
Probably glass and going to shelter.
And this is a normal bike rack or this is one of the, one station of that fleet? Like the, their even, their, their bike rental?
Still just a bus shelter, right?
I believe so, yes.
They may put a bike rack, but as far as the, the Meathville bike share, I don't think that's part of this.
Does anybody have any other questions?
So, sorry, it does say bike rack in the, in, in the resolution that we're looking at? And it's just a straight-up bike rack?
And bike rack.
That's why I'm from the bicentennial park between the city of Meathville. Or it's just not a bike rack? Like, in the, in the title of the resolution?
In, in the license agreement, it does say that there's a bike-share rack, so, um, they must be incorporating a bike-share rack as part of it, yes.
Yes. So it'll add to that.
Great. That's nice.
Is it, oh, sorry, uh, is it connected to the French Creek development in any way that we think? Is it part of...
Not directly anymore, no. That was the original idea, but not directly.
Oh, sorry. Roque?
McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi. Uh, resolution, authorize signatures outdoors, license agreement, Voodoo, the city of Meathville.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
This is a resolution of the council of the city of Meathville authorizing signatures on a license agreement for outdoor seating between the city of Meathville and Voodoo Brewing Company, LLC.
Uh, so this is a license agreement that the city and Voodoo entered in together last year as well. This is at Voodoo's Art Street location. Um, the amount of the licensing fee is one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars. Council will note, this is different than the licensing fees for, for Chipper's or Julian's. That's because Julian's and Chipper's use a right-of-way. Voodoo actually uses city property. Um, so there's a square footage calculation to arrive at the eighteen forty-eight number.
Is this the same amount as last year?
Correct.
And the same space?
Yes.
The amount, they just, okay. I'm, I'm, when I said amount, I meant money and then, sorry.
Yes, yep.
Sound like I asked the same question to you, but, um, does anybody have any questions? Okay, Roque?
McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi. Uh, resolution, authorize signature of service agreement, Meathville Medical Center and the city of Meathville.
Should we observe the same procedure?
Right, um, uh, so...
Motion to consider.
Yes, move to consider, I'm sorry.
I will, so move.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you.
This is a resolution of the council of the city of Meathville authorizing signatures on a service agreement for police services between the city of Meathville and Meathville Medical Center.
Uh, so the city was approached by Meathville Medical Center to enter into this agreement. It really solidifies actually what the city currently does in practice. Um, however, there would be a, uh, fee provided to the city from the medical center in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars if the city were to enter into this agreement. The only difference, um, in this from what the city currently does is that there would be a walkthrough of the medical center's ER and Behavioral Health Center. Um, in the agreement, the city is also responsible for driving through the parking lots, um, either transporting or supervising transports of, um, folks from the ER to the Behavioral Health Center. And that is for the safety of ambulance providers. Um, we have, again, done that for years and years already. Um, the agreement is very general and very broad. There's no specific times or a number of times associated, um, with the agreement. And that is because of staffing. We don't know what circumstances may come up. So, um, the medical center was very kind in allowing us to, um, not be set in stone on times and frequency.
Now, is that the, uh, the Liberty and Groves Street facilities?
Correct.
It's eighty-five thousand annually?
Correct. Um, and this is, would be the first year. Their fiscal year starts in July. Um, we are hopeful that their next fiscal year, the amount will increase.
Would this supplement, like, I think at one point, they kind of had their own internal, um, department, or at least the security...
They still have security.
They still have security.
There's a part of them coordinating together, working together.
Yes, that's right. So, so this is it? This doesn't, like, replace the security they have?
Oh, that's not gonna affect our insurance or anything on, on coverage for our police officer, I believe.
It should not. Um, Knox Law Firm has reviewed the agreement. They actually, um, helped to write the agreement, uh, so they, there's no indication that this would increase our liability in any fashion.
So we have to vote on considering and then vote to table?
Very good to consider. If you want to table it, you do a separate motion, second, and then...
I'd like to, I'd like to move to table so we can have a little discussion. There's some minor editorial changes that we probably should make.
You want to table it to the work session?
That'd be great. That way, we, I mean, we can get this moving hopefully by the next regular meeting.
You have a second? Second?
I'm second. Just in terms of discussion, I think, like, for me, it, it sounds like a good deal, but it's, it's a, it's a big deal. I mean, so, so I think just having the time to consider it.
Yeah, I agree.
A few days, Bill. Um, Roque?
McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi. Uh, public comment on non-agenda items?
None.
Uh, council member statements? Um, Jim?
Oh, I'll keep it brief tonight. Um, I'm waiting literally any minute for my fifth great-grandchild.
Oh, congratulations. Did it happen?
He's late.
That's why you want to table stuff.
Okay, now Gretchen?
Well, if anyone's watching out there, I would get to say, in terms of community engagement, Autumn and I will be hanging out at community events and, no, but seriously, though, we really do want to know your concerns and how we can help, um, so that, that was my thought.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
No, just thank everyone for coming and I'm really appreciative of what you guys have accomplished. Um, I think we can see the city, um, for example, for Autumn and I, um, we're seeing some of our, our goals, and Jamie and Gretchen seeing some of our goals and things that we ran on coming to fruition. And I think it's, I think it's good. And I hope we can continue to work to, uh, get everything accomplished. I'm very impressed with what you guys are doing, both the fire department and, and the ambulance. It's, it's amazing.
Thanks, Lily. Um, yeah, I, um, I didn't bring this up in the meeting, but I would hope that, um, maybe we just have to look at the housing preservation grant, um, coming up. Uh, if we can add that to our study session agenda, um, that would, that would be great. And there could still be time to, uh, to, to move on that. Um, I think that it would be a good opportunity for us to have funds, um, available, uh, especially as we're inspecting properties and, 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 uh, there's code violations that need to be addressed, right? If we had a pot of money, um, that, that could be used in that way, that would be helpful. Um, as I hear more about how home repair is, is coming out, right? Like, uh, the fact that it's paying for someone's salary and it's going across the county, it's, it's, it's good, but, right? It's, it's pretty diffused. And so, um, trying to leave paying stone unturned in terms of how we can invest in our housing stock and, um, do it in a way that, um, is, uh, keeps people in their homes, I think is, is good. Um, so I hope we can talk about that on Wednesday. Um, uh, we moved through this part of the meeting quickly, but thanks to Mar and Ty for the service, um, on both the Market Authority and the Civil Service Board. Thanks, thanks to both of them for that. Um, and then there was someone else who's resigned, but we'll see them next time. I don't remember what. Um, but no, truly, it's, uh, you know, the, the, so many of the volunteers on the Authority Board and Commission put in a whole lot, and, um, it's, it's really appreciated. Um, speaking of which, the Shade Tree Commission has been doing great stuff lately. They had Arbor Day in Meathville, got trees for proclamation and planted some new trees at, at Cora Clark. Um, we, this is our thirtieth year in the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. That little plaque that's in that little cabinet, I, I put it in there. There's nothing else in there. Uh, but the guy from DCNR was like, I've never seen one that said thirty. Like, like, so just, uh, it's, it's a, it's a, uh, you know, a, a market occasion, uh, to be committed, uh, for, for three decades, right? To, to trees in our city. And, and it's been a volunteer let-up for, for the most part. So the Shade Tree Commission is great, and thanks to them. Saturday, there's a farmer's market, starts the season every Saturday at our lovely historic market house. Um, folks should go. And then the following Saturday, second Saturday, downtown Meathville, Jasmine Street. And there's First Friday this week, this week as well. Spring has sprung in Meathville, it's a wonderful time to be here. And it's a beautiful time. My neighborhood right now, so beautiful. I think we should have a competition. Where people submit pictures of their neighborhoods and we compete for the most beautiful. I feel like that's really pretty wonderful. So, anyway, it's a great time to be here. Um, yeah, I want to thank everybody for what they do. Um, I want to lift up, of course, uh, um, Kim Kardashian for being an emerging leader, right? Sorry, I'm like, sorry. I'm like, totally, my, my, huh? What's that?
That guy just pointed.
Right. This guy here for, uh, being an emerging leader, that, that was the award. But just freaking living here and being a leader and caring about people, we appreciate you. Um, also, um, people here are doing big things. And, uh, I didn't get to go up to the celebration up at Gannon, but Melinda Nierma, right? Uh, is that how you say her last name?
I believe so.
Um, is, and Annie's, uh, uh, is, uh, the small business of the year in, like, the state, right? Or just in our area?
Region?
Uh, region, which, of the state in our eyes, yeah, in, in the entire world. Um, and I think that, uh, that needs to be lifted up because it's hard, right? And it's hard to do good things, and it's hard to be present, and it's hard to, you know, live, right? Like, life is not easy, and she's doing awesome things and big things. And, and, uh, I think she deserves, um, the recognition. And I know that the people and the business owners in town have, have really lifted her up, but I want to make sure that the city is also doing so. Um, and again, I didn't get to go up there and, and congratulate her, but, uh, because I was, I was doing other things. But, um, I do want everybody to know, uh, what, like, what we're doing here, right? Uh, everybody thinks it's cool things. We've invited lots of people into our town and everybody loves it. Um, everybody wants to come. When we start talking about it, uh, can't be just me, right? Selling this place. It's, 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 everybody loves what we're doing. So, um, and wants to live here and be a part of it. Um, so I, I do want to just, uh, thank everybody for what they're doing, whether it's planting trees on your day off or bringing people that you work with, right, into our town to, on a tour, right? Or owning a business, or taking care of kids, you know, um, or being a part of government, or, uh, being a city manager that wants to strangle us sometimes. I can see that. So, um, I just want to thank everybody for being here, living here, and, and living in, uh, you know, community with us. So with that, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
To executive session.
To executive session.
To discuss personnel and real estate.
Okay. Um... Okay. Uh, discussion?
Roque?
McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi.